Good afternoon, Beacons. My name is Marcelo Suarez Orozco, and I am honored and humbled to serve as chancellor of Boston's great public research university. This is my very first town hall, and I very much look forward to sharing with all our communities information that I hope you will find useful. I wish we did not have to do this in mundo lume. I wish I could be with you in person, face to face, and I very much look forward to the day when we can meet each other and I can greet each and every one of you personally. Last month, we've lost two beloved members of the Beacon family. I ask for a moment of silence in remembrance of Dr. Sari Kawana, professor of Japanese in the Department of Modern Languages, Literatures and Cultures, and Dr. David Terkla, professor of economics and dean of the College of Liberal Arts. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Ours are trying times indeed. We are in the midst of a raging pandemic leaving in its wake painful suffering, loss, and economic destruction. This wicked pandemic is especially cruel to our most underserved communities. The data are truly horrendous, but perhaps not surprising. If you're a person of color, the chances you'll get the virus are three times higher. The chances you will be hospitalized from the virus are five times higher, and the chances you may die from the virus are double for our black communities. So we must stay vigilant. We must privilege safety and wellness in all we do. I appear before you this afternoon keenly aware of the uncertainty and anxiety that we're all feeling in the wake of the November 3 election. The results of these national elections may not be final for days. While we await the confirmation of the next president of the United States, two things are clear today. First, every vote matters. I earned the right to vote by becoming an American citizen, an opportunity that I cherish every voting cycle. When I walked to drop my ballot at our local ballot box a couple of weeks ago, my heart was racing as it does every time I partake in this secular ritual so central to the promise of democratic citizenship. Truth be told, my heart is still racing today. But now, we must be patient and allow for every ballot to be counted. I repeat, every vote must be counted. This is the very foundation of our democracy. While we are all anxious for a resolution, we must remember that patience is a virtue, and in this case, it is imperative to determine the outcome of this election and, as importantly, for the future protection of voter rights. Every vote must be counted. Second, our country remains deeply divided. We have become the proverbial porcupines in winter. We need to come together in community for warmth, yet when we come together, we break one another, and so we come apart again. Today, it seems our metaphoric porcupine quills are sharp, sharp indeed. I've heard many say that in these days and the days after the election, as someone quoted in the New York Times put it, voters of both parties, all voters perhaps, were left with the troubling realization, I'm quoting, "the troubling realization that perhaps they had misunderstood their country, their towns, perhaps even their neighbors," end of quote. I understand why many of us feel this way given the reported results to date and the clear division we have seen in the months and years prior to the election. I empathize with every individual in our community who woke up again today with these feelings of anxiety, fear, uncertainty. For I too wake up in the morning with a general sense of malaise and a sense of discontent. But I also remain hopeful and sharply focused on what is next for us at UMass Boston. I am grateful on this day to be the leader of the University of Massachusetts, Boston. To me, this is the dream of a lifetime. A public research university whose student body is among the most diverse in the country with almost 60% of our undergraduates who are first-generation students. That means a lot to me personally. Our students are the future of our country, and we, as a community, can decide together today and every day moving forward what we want this country to become. We in higher education have a unique responsibility to discuss, to debate, civilly, the issues and the topics that divide us today. An obligation to send our graduates into the world, prepare to make an impact, to shape it, and take a stand for what they believe in. That is our enormous responsibility. We will know in due time the outcome of this election. The outcome may bring you joy or turn out not as you had hoped, but I want to encourage everyone to remain steadfast in our values of dignity, respect, and caring for one another. Today, I also want to show my gratitude. I am mindful of the effects the pandemic and the pandemics are having on our community members' well-being, both physically, mentally, in terms of economy, in terms of culture. I want to say thank you to our faculty for your enormous commitment to continue to provide quality, remote teaching and learning for our communities to remain engaged and on time towards pursuing the dream of a college education. I want to thank our staff for the support and unwavering dedication to the challenging tasks at hand day in and day out. This is your efforts make all the difference, and I see them day in and day out. And I am truly appreciative for all the members of our staff community do every day. I want to thank our students for bearing with us and helping us navigate through these challenging, challenging times. These two shall pass. Stay strong, stay in community, stay engaged. Better days are coming. Today, members of the leadership will share updates on the following items. First, our budget. The COVID-19 pandemic has created an enormous level of uncertainty for our endeavors to work on our university budget. We have planned for a balanced budget that fully supports remote teaching and learning and all the necessary health and safety protocols in place for everything we do. We will be updating today on our budget, and we will continue to update our communities as the year progresses and as more information becomes known about the university's revenues. And you will hear more about that today. We will also share the endeavors for our spring term. We will also share excellent news about enrollment. We will also share data on student retention and student success, very, very important and very encouraging trends. We will also share general updates on the SDQD project, Bayside, and the CAFFaster pump station. It is now my pleasure to turn it over to our vice chancellor for administration and finance, Kathleen Curleys. Kathleen will share the update on the budget. Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you, Chancellor Suarez Orozco. Today, we will spend some time talking about budget update. Before I start, the materials being discussed today would not be possible without the collaboration, hard work, and support of many in our campus community. I would like to offer some special thanks, as shown on the next slide, to our deans and vice chancellors and university leadership for their subject matter expertise, the advocacy they've had for their respective areas, and an unwavering commitment to this university's success. I'd also like to thank the Budget and Long Range Planning Committee. Under the guidance of its chair, Dr. Alice Carter, this committee's collective wisdom, experience, and commitment to shared governance has been invaluable during the pandemic. The committee made themselves available for regular meetings over the summer to help ensure that our budget was ready for this fall. To all the faculty at this session today, please know that you have knowledgeable and committed colleagues who worked tirelessly on your behalf to ensure that faculty voices are included in the budget as it's developed and deployed. The FNA Advisory Group, under the guidance of Associate Vice Chancellor for A&amp;F, Chris Giuliani, this group of about 70 administrative staff has met weekly on Zoom throughout the whole pandemic to deal with the nuts and bolts of the budget. Many of these members are the go-to finance people in the colleges and departments who have listened to you and brought your issues and concerns together weekly so that there can be advice provided to campus leadership, where issues are raised and solved and concerns are addressed so that many voices in our campus community have had a chance to be heard in the budget process. I'd also like to thank the union leadership who's worked tirelessly to advocate for additional resources for our budget and ensure that employee issues and concerns are discussed and solved as they come up. Our student government leadership has been fantastic. They've been available to discuss many financial issues important to students so that we can also make sure that we're listening and working to address those matters. And last but not least, I'd like to offer a special thank you to the university's finance staff and A&amp;F and academic affairs, the Office of Budget and Financial Planning under the direction of Matt Krevis, the Controller's Office under Patty Averko, and Tom Miller in the Provost's Office have worked and reworked scenarios, prepared reports, held meetings, to just work with staff as we've made our way through this pandemic. Their hard work has ensured that we've had timely financial information to use and communicate to our stakeholders throughout our community. So next, we'll talk a little bit about the close of fiscal '20. Our university's fiscal year does run from July 1st to June 30th, and as we, the pandemic began, we were in fiscal '20. We went ahead, and, next slide, we wound up closing fiscal '20 with a surplus. This was due to us meeting our budget, expense budget that we had been planning throughout the year and having better revenue than expected in the fourth quarter. So overall, we continue to see that as we have a budget that's so close to being balanced, the activity in the last quarter of the year can have a material effect on the overall budget results. So it continues that we need to be proactive in planning our budget throughout the year. We had some very positive activity in the fourth quarter. Our tuition and fees for the summer session were higher than what we originally planned, $2 million higher. We also had benefited from federal stimulus money under the CARES Act. The federal government provided support for universities and colleges throughout the country, and last year, we were able to recognize $1.7 million worth of funding that helped support the university as they made refunds to all of our students for dining and parking when we had gone to remote status in March. And then we had some other positive news coming out of advancement with increased gift revenue. Our sponsored research area had better results than we had originally thought, and our state appropriation also was slightly better. So all in all, a positive end to the fiscal year. We did finish at a 1.1% margin with an operating surplus of $5 million. This information was reported to the Board of Trustees, as shown on the next slide, at their September meeting. And you can see that, overall, it put in the picture, UMass Boston was holding its own in financial results for the year. So that was presented to the board in September. The audit of the university is ongoing, and we would expect that the audited financial statements will be presented to the board at the Audit Committee meeting in December. Moving on to fiscal '21, we came into July, and the Board of Trustees adopted the university's fiscal '21 budget at that time. It included a budget that had no increase in tuition rates for fiscal '21, and the main issue with this year's budget had to do with a decrease in revenue. So if you look at the revenues up here at the top of this slide, practically every single line had a decrease and was affected by different activity that was going on related to the pandemic. You also will note that, in the recent past, one of the main challenges with the university had that increase in depreciation and interest related to the university's debt service. For this year, those are pretty stable. There was not a big increase in those. This year was really marked by a change in the university's revenue that was available. So when all was said and done in looking at how we were going to start fiscal '21, we were at close to a $40 million deficit. If you see down at the bottom here, $39.5 million. So we had recognized that and then presented to the board in the estimated budget column here on this slide, a budget with solutions that would allow us to have a balanced budget. Because of the pandemic, the budget is going to be updated as more information becomes known and the health situation changes. So if we move on to the next slide, we've identified three major times when we will be looking at the budget and taking a look at updating it. The first time is when the fall enrollment ends at the end of ADROP. So as the chancellor mentioned, this is very positive news for the university. John Drew will be joining us later in this session to talk in great detail about this and share those results. And I also will be sharing some fiscal information about that. We also will be looking at the state appropriation when that gets finalized by the state legislature. Normally, that's something that gets finalized in June or July or maybe August at the latest. This year, the state still is without a final adopted budget. So when that is adopted, we will be updating our budget then. And then, last but not least, we also know that as we make plans for the spring and how we're going to operate in the spring, there may be some, there will be some updates in how we need to think about the budget related to those plans so that we can make sure we're fully supporting our students and our faculty and staff as we go into the spring semester. Additionally, we also have had an updated budget process that's been underway with all the areas of the university so that we can be prepared in the event we need to look at adjusting the budget about some different options that could be available. So if we go to the next slide, when we were back in July when the board adopted the budget, the main reasons why revenue was down were fivefold. There was the enrollment. We originally, at the time we were planning and working on what we knew about enrollment, we thought enrollment would be down 3% based on demographics in the state, what our enrollment management folks were seeing. We just had planned for an amount of revenue down. We also knew international students. The international environment was not very conducive to having international students. It makes it easy for international students to come enroll at our university. So we had planned for that. We're happy to report later that we've done better than that in the fall. The state appropriation, we worked constantly with the state legislature and the governor to figure out what the state appropriation might look like for the University of Massachusetts. Based on the information last spring, it looks like there would be a 10% decrease in the state appropriation, and that amount was planned for every single campus in the UMass system. Well, I'm happy to, I'll have some other news to report about that as we progress in this session as well. But we, back in July, it was looking like a 10% decrease was going to be what was going to happen in the state appropriation. Because we're operating in a remote environment, many of the activities that generate revenue on campus just aren't happening right now. So parking meal plans, university health services, conferences that we host, events that we have, all those things that generate revenue and the auxiliary side of the house and ESS side of the house, those are just not happening this year. So there definitely was a decrease in revenue there. We've also had increased expenses or new expenses for COVID-19, surveillance testing, personal protective equipment, cleaning and disinfecting, all those kinds of costs that are necessary to ensure that our campus community is safe and that we're doing the things that we need to do, we needed to plan for and fund. And then, last but not least, like any other year, we move forward and we look and see how the budget looks last year and what we know about this year. We did have some changes with tuition discounting and the fringe rate coming out of the Commonwealth that we also factored into the budget. Now, as we moved into the first quarter, we began to take a look at that budget plan and began to implement it. So we've made a lot of progress on that so far this year. I'm happy to report that. On the non-personnel side, because we've been in remote status, there's significant savings the university's had in utilities and on some of the contracts that we have to support the physical plant because we just don't have the amount of people that are on campus in a normal semester. We've also restricted spending to only be for essential items that support remote instruction. So there's a lot of spending that's been put on hold until such time as we come back to be on campus full-time. On the personnel side, we had some very difficult activities that have taken place. We've had some furloughs with the executive leadership team and others. We've had a hiring chill, really been taking a look at making sure our personnel costs stay according to our budget. And then, last but not least, we have the CARES Act, which has provided one-time funding for the university in the form of dollars coming from the federal government. Now that we move into November, on the next slide, there's reasons to be cautiously optimistic about how our budget looks. Also, first, as I've mentioned, our tuition and fee revenue for this fall was better than we budgeted. Our fall revenue, our second session in the summer, and the discounts associated with those two time periods have been better than projected. We also have a new program called Shorelight American Collegiate Live. This is a new program that enrolls non-credit international students who couldn't come to the United States to study. When we have new programs like this, we don't budget for them in the first year. We plan for them, we do everything we need to, but then if they generate revenue, then we'll recognize the revenue, and it will be part of our results. But we wouldn't really budget for them until it becomes a program that's up and running. So this program, I'll be happy to report, has been successful. We've enrolled students, and there is revenue to the university on that. Other times, we've had other programs where that hasn't been the case, but for this one, it's been very positive. And then, you know, spring we'll be looking at. We aren't sure how that's going to look with the pandemic, but we've got some assumptions in the budget, and we will be monitoring that as enrollment progresses. On the state appropriation, I am super happy to report that the governor's budget level-funded the University of Massachusetts. So that 10% that we had been planning is a reduction, which is about $13 million to our budget. The governor has recommended level funding so that that $13 million would be restored into the budget. The House budget came out today after these slides were done, and the House budget also endorses the rate that the governor had recommended. So those two are now in alignment. We'll have to wait and see what the Senate says when they come out. Should all three of these areas agree, and this is what's adopted, then our funding would be restored, be better than what we had originally planned in the budget, and we will be able to adjust our plans for the year based on that increased level of funding. We also need to look at, now that we've announced our plans for the spring, make sure that we've got the budget squared away with that. So we will be looking at, unfortunately, some further losses in auxiliary revenues because we just won't have folks around on campus in a large-scale way. And we also will have some savings again because we won't have as many people. So our utilities and cleaning and things like that will probably be more similar to the fall than a regular semester. And we also are preparing for some additional costs associated with the coronavirus. We are expecting that we're going to be able to have some increased levels of surveillance testing as recommendations have changed. And we'll also be just preparing for, to make sure we have the necessary support for any staff who are deemed essential to be on campus in the spring. On the cautionary side, our COVID support and costs, the future there remains a little bit unclear. The CARES Act institutional side has been a little bit more limited than originally hoped, but we are working to fully deploy those funds. And we also have received some funding from the state. The state receives some CARES Act money under the Governor's Emergency Educational Relief Fund. I'll talk a little bit more about that as well, which is a positive development for the university. And then, last but not least, like any other year, there's other risks to the budget that we have to deal with as it goes on. Things could wind up having to be added based on activities that happen. We could change some of the timelines where some of the activities could wind up being changed. But all in all, I think it's really time to be cautiously optimistic about our budget. If we go to look at tuition and fees specifically, in the fall, we've recognized $4.2 million of revenue more than what we originally planned for the budget. So how did that break out? The summer term, as I mentioned, was up $300,000. Our fall 2020 term in terms of revenue associated with the enrollment up $2.9 million. And then, on the new Shorelight ACL program, here's where there's money paid by students, there's cost paid to Shorelight. The net of that is $1 million of new revenue for the university. And then, we also will be looking at how that activity in the fall translates to the spring. So this is a very good news story. I would mention, UMass Boston is the only institution of public higher education in the Commonwealth who had increased enrollment for the fall. who had increased enrollment for the fall. So everybody, overall statewide enrollment in public higher ed is off 7%. We were the only ones who have an increase. So we should be very happy about those results. And I think, you know, our university community will benefit from, from, from it. If we talk about the state for a minute, the state, as I mentioned, they have not adopted a budget yet. They are on a 112 budget through the end of November. We are hopeful we'll get a budget this month. The governor's budget, as I said and mentioned, level funding for the University of Massachusetts, it would restore $13 million for us. It does need to have legislative approval. So, you know, we won't really know till the whole process is done. I mean, things could change in the House and the Senate, but with the House now recommending the same amount as the governor, we look, it looks that much better. So we're cautiously optimistic. And for everybody who's been out there advocating along with us, thank you. Your voices are being heard and we're really pleased with these results. Once the budget is adopted, then we will make changes to the actual budget plan. So we'll, we'll be preparing for what those changes might look like. But until we actually have a signed, sealed and delivered budget, we won't be making any formal changes to the budget until that time. On the spring semester, as we've now made plans for how we're going to operate, we will be looking, working with the spring planning committee around those kinds of costs that are needed or will be changed in the budget. And we'll be reporting out on that to the campus community once that work is, is complete. For the COVID relief money, this is a really important one-time source of money for the university this fiscal year. There have been opportunities for us to help defray some of the costs related to the pandemic from the federal government. First area is with FEMA. FEMA does provide funding support for primarily expenses associated with emergency response. So some of our personal protective costs, costs, staffing costs associated with dealing with different items of the pandemic and so on are potentially eligible for reimbursement. We have already submitted over $180,000 to FEMA for, for such costs. And they're eligible for 75% reimbursement. So that is something that's underway. We also have the CARES Act. Over $12 million was granted to UMass Boston directly from the federal government as an institution. 50% of that is for student, direct student aid. I'm happy to report that to date, over $4.7 million of those funds have been distributed to our students. And we're now in the final round of funding for making grants to deploy that money. On the institutional side of the award, we did do $1.7 million last year in fiscal '20. The remaining money is available for this year for COVID costs. And we presently are in the process of identifying those under the first quarter to get that submitted. And last but not least, the governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. This is money that from the CARES Act that went directly to the Commonwealth. Then the Commonwealth distributed that to educational institutions, public and private throughout the Commonwealth. For the University of Massachusetts, they allocated that portion based on the state funding allocation. And for us, we're getting $889,000. And that will be able to be used for surveillance testing and other COVID costs. And that's really important support because prior to this emergency educational relief, we didn't have a funding source for the surveillance costs. Those would just have to have been paid out of our own budget. So this allows us an opportunity to have those costs covered by some stimulus money as well. There's a couple of remaining issues that we're just going to keep an eye on as we make our way through fiscal '21. The first is debt refunding. The market conditions have been favorable to consider refinancing some of the university's debt. We work closely with the UMass Building Authority on that kind of project, with UMass Building Authority taking the lead on it. They are in the process of going through refinancing, refunding right now. And we're waiting for those results. So once we have those results, we can build those into the budget. We could be looking at a million, a million and a half dollars of savings potentially if the market conditions remain as they were when they were initially scoping this project out. We also keep an eye on debt borrowing. As we've talked previously, the SDQD project is one-half funded by the Commonwealth through the state's Department of Capital Asset Maintenance and Management called D-CAM. The other half is funded by the university. The university had borrowed a portion of that money previously in borrowings that had taken place in prior years. And then there's a remaining portion of our match that will need to be financed when it's needed in the construction project. So we've been spending the state's money first. Then we're spending the money that we have on account that we already borrowed second. And right now, we're in the process of working with the building authority and the project on the timing of the cash flows to, to make final arrangements for when the borrowing for the remaining portion of the university's funding will be needed. It does look like that will happen, be needed for the fourth quarter of this year. So we will be adjusting the budget as we might need to based on the final timing of when that cost will be required to be borrowed. And then, not dissimilar to last year, we'll plan for the summer one enrollment, but that isn't very tail end of the fiscal year. And so those results could differ from what we have budgeted and could affect the budget as we get into the very final part of the year. So I think that's a little summary on the budget. People may ask, well, what about that budget process that's been ongoing? I might be working on that in my department. How is, how, what, what's the status of that? We are, the budget office is working with departments on continuing that process. Templates have been submitted for non-payroll cost planning. The budget office is comparing that information right now. And we'll be looking at what we might need for any kind of savings still for the remaining fiscal year and be back in touch with departments in, in November. There's certainly some of those savings that might be required will be influenced by some of the revenue changes that I've talked about. So we'll, you know, we'll be keeping an eye on that. But, you know, thank you to everybody who's done a lot of hard work on this. But we just really wanted to have this information so that we could take a look at it in case it was needed. On the student temporary payroll, overtime graduate student payroll front, there's been a lot of work done to date on that. Those processes are complete and are within planned savings. So at this point, I think that pretty much is done for right now. So I think, you know, people have got budgets and those will be in place to be deployed. And then last but not least, we're working on revenue-based budgets as part of this updated budget process. That work is ongoing with the budget office for all those kinds of funds that are restricted, you know, ESS, lab fees, student fees and so on. So, you know, we do anticipating, anticipate communicating results of the entire budget, you know, by early December. I'm caveat-ing, caveat-ing that by saying I would expect the state budget to be in place by that time. But when we have that, we'll be communicating this and, you know, having more information be available. The last item I'll mention in this section is the capital budget. The university has a capital budget in addition to the operating budget. And the capital budget consists of two parts. One is a capital plan, which is a five-year plan that looks at what kind of projects might be planned over the next five years. And the other one is a 21, is the budget for the current year, fiscal '21. So for this year, coincidentally, the fiscal '21 budget is $21 million. That is basically working within the available cash that's generated from depreciation to be able to support the university's fiscal plan. So there is some major categories within the budget. Our life safety, COVID response items, projects that are going to make a positive impact on the operating budget. Those are things like, you know, energy efficiency kinds of projects. And then we have contingency to deal with those projects that we know will come up. We just don't know exactly what's, what's going to happen if something fails or needs to be addressed on an emergency basis. There are items associated with accreditation and compliance that we're working with various departments on. Those will be added as required. So the university takes very seriously its commitment to meet accreditation standards and compliance requirements. And we will add those to the budget is they're identified. And then last but not least, restricted fund projects. Those are, you know, clear to go ahead. They are added to the budget as they become known. And those will be moving forward also. So the budget right now is going to be discussed with the Budget and Long Range Planning Committee. Have, have, have some dialogue there. We'll be getting this finalized so that we will be able to get that out to the campus community. We will be looking at the planning for fiscal '22 to '25 as the campus's master planning process gets underway in the new year and as, as we look at some of the timing for some of the current projects. So with that, I think that sort of sums up a little bit of information around the university's operating and capital budgets. And I'm going to turn this over to Deputy Chancellor Garrett Smith.
Thank you so much, thank you so much Kathleen for your extraordinarily thorough, precise, on-point presentation. I think that the, the thoroughness, I think the flexibility, I think the, the extraordinary discipline and adaptability by the entire team in these times of tremendous uncertainty are to be commended. And I am so grateful to you and to your team and to all our communities who have endeavored to get us in a situation that is in the context of enormous uncertainty and lost a beacon of hope for moving us forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. So I'm, I'm just going to rehash quickly some things that went out in the chancellor's memo to the community last week regarding our spring term planning. And there's some, you can see the links at the bottom of the page here. If anyone missed the memo, you can go find it on our coronavirus website under Campus Updates. Last week, we announced some major spring planning decisions. Number one, that the vast majority of our coursework will be remote in the spring semester. The, number two, the vast majority of our work will remain remote during the spring semester. Only those activities that have been deemed essential are time-sensitive and that are already occurring on campus will, will continue to occur on campus. Number three, the residence halls will remain open with the reduced occupancy to promote health and safety. Number four, that the campus safety protocols and policies that are in place will remain in place. No surprise, right? The mitigation measures of social distancing, mask-wearing, hygiene, cleaning and disinfection will all continue. Number, number six, I'm going to skip to number six because it kind of goes with that one. Another layer of our safety measures has been our surveillance testing program, our COVID testing program at UHS has worked incredibly hard to stand up. We will likely, as, as testing becomes more widely available, we will likely expand the work that we're doing around surveillance testing so that we can have data about the safety of everyone who is on campus, even though it's quite an unlimited number. And then number five, Lauren, if you could go back for just one second. So on number five, I think an important focus of our spring planning is trying, trying to figure out what are the different ways that we can increase engagement, enhance the remote experience, knowing that this is not the ideal modality to live life and work and study and teach. We're trying to pull some levers to increase engagement and enhance the experience. I'm not going to go through that detail. But you can, you've seen it in the memo and I'm sure you'll be hearing more about some of these things. Okay, now on to the next slide. Thank you to everyone who provided feedback. There's been a, a great planning committee that's been working diligently on these recommendations that were announced. And we received a ton of feedback in listening sessions, in emails submitted through a web form. And we've tried, I mean, it's impossible to summarize 350 pieces of feedback, but some of the themes are here. And we've, we, we tried in our planning efforts to integrate some of these and listen to this, this feedback as best we could. On, on the next slide, I just wanted to highlight, so we really wanted to make an announcement last week so that students would know when they were registering for courses that we were going to be majority remote. And for those courses that will be on campus either fully or partially, we wanted to make sure that that information was in WISER so that students would know as they were registering if, if on-campus presence was going to be needed. So the provost's office has worked really hard with deans and departments and faculty to identify courses that really absolutely required at least some face-to-face interaction. 28 courses have been approved. You can see here, many of them are in nursing. They're in the lab sciences. And the others that you might not recognize all have some component of hands-on, face-to-face activity that really requires them to be on campus. And now that we've identified them, a process will begin to really develop an operational plan to maintain health and safety for everyone participating in these courses. On the, on the next slide, I just wanted to highlight or say another word or two about our, our testing program that UHS has operated. There are about 3,200 tests given to date, 12 positives, which is a 0.4% positivity rate. There have been kind of four major components of this program. One is surveillance tested in the residence halls. So all students living in the residence halls plus, plus the staff working there are tested each week. Number two, we've begun doing testing of students and instructors in face-to-face courses who are coming to campus frequently. So they're also getting tested once per week. Number three, we have testing for anyone who really needs it because they're symptomatic or because they've had exposure to, to others who are symptomatic. And number four, and this is, I think, a really important one for the entire community to know, there is on-demand testing for any member, any student or staff or faculty, a member of our community who wants to get tested. You can simply call UHS. Do not just show up, please call. But, but it's really easy to set up an appointment. I actually set up an appointment and had a test yesterday. I was in and out of campus in less than 15 minutes. And so everyone should know that that's available as an option. And so this has been, I think, a really useful program to have, to, to give us another level of safety on campus. And there's also a website where you can track, track the data if you're interested, if, if you just look for the coronavirus dashboard on the website. And lastly, we can't talk at all about coronavirus planning unless we sort of highlight that our plans could change at any time. And we'll be watching the data. Obviously, the data in Boston and in Massachusetts has been getting worse. And so we're watching very closely and we will adjust our plans as needed as things unfold. And with that, I will kick it back to, I think, John Drew, maybe next, with a happier update.
Thank you. Garrett, if I may, I want to, I want to emphasize the, the extraordinary labors of our team in UHS. Their endeavors are amazing, the discipline, the heart and the smarts with which they are managing day in and day out. The testing, ensuring that we have quality data, that we have speedy results, that this is done in a speedy and humane fashion is truly admirable. And I am extraordinarily grateful to the entire team for their work at the front lines of the pandemic. Thank you. Thank you for your work. John?
Thank you so much, Chancellor. I have the honor of providing an update on our enrollment, which would be a source of pride for all of us in our community. As Kathleen alluded to, when COVID infiltrated our lives, it definitely created a lot of uncertainty. And certainly on the enrollment side, we had a lot of questions about what it would mean for new and continuing student enrollment. I want to start a little bit more globally before I get into our particular numbers. At a national level, we have actually seen across the nation about a 3% drop in enrollment. First-time students entering college dropped by 16%. And different sectors of education have been hit differently by this. Community colleges have dropped about a 9%. Public institutions have dropped by about 2%. I'm thrilled to, to update our campus and, and share with all of you that our enrollment has actually grown by headcount for fall of 2020. It grew by 1.7% to a total student population of 16,259, so about 270 more students compared to the previous year. How'd we get there? It was a combination of our undergraduate enrollment growing by 2.2% and also our graduate maintaining strong enrollment. Tremendous amount of work has gone into all of that and I will thank some of the groups. But it certainly was, was a team effort in doing all this work. I also think it's important just to highlight a few statistics on our community so that we all have some understanding of who our students are. This year, with our fall 2020 enrollment, about 55% of our students are students of color. 83% are full-time students. And we've seen that that is a trend that continues to, to increase. And that's very helpful for students for degree progression and, and working towards a degree. And 59% of our students are identified as female students. A little bit more of a local level within our community in Massachusetts, as Kathleen also mentioned previously, there's been a decline in enrollment across all of Massachusetts Public Higher Education by about 7%. We were the only UMass Boston, the only, UMass Boston was the only campus that experienced growth in new and overall student enrollment. So kudos to everyone that's been involved in all of the initiatives to bring students. My next slide provides just a little bit more of an update, a closer look at our fall 2020 enrollment. Our freshman class in particular, we saw some great success and it grew by 5%. It was mentioned earlier a little bit about our first generation. Fifty-six percent of our freshman class are first in their family to go to college. Not noted on this slide, but worth noting publicly, our Directions for Student Potential Program, a tremendous summer college access program. Welcome to one of the largest classes we've ever seen in that program. A ton of people working very hard under difficult circumstances this summer to make sure that we are providing a really strong academic program for our Massachusetts students. Continuing student highlight, we grew our continuing student population by 1%, which is very exciting. We have seen some shifts in the composition of our enrollment. More in-state students, our in-state student population grew by about 2.4% and our out-of-state population grew as well, even more than our in-state. It was a very challenging year for our international students who, with COVID and travel restrictions, that was not a population that we were able to grow and we'll continue to work with those students to welcome them back in future semesters. A couple of initiatives that are highlighted on the right. Teams worked really hard on a readmit campaign and I think this is really important work for students that may have to stop out for a semester, is making sure that we're doing everything we can to bring them back into our community. We welcomed 712 readmitted students back to UMass Boston and that was a 9% increase over the previous year. And so we're very proud of everyone that worked on, on those initiatives. And was mentioned earlier, our new Shorelight ACL initiative was one way that we were able to connect with the international student community and provide them an option to participate in non-degree courses, credit courses with our faculty and using some really innovative technology. So excited about that program as well. As I wrap things up, you know, enrollment is, is 100% a team effort. I'm very proud of the Division of Enrollment Management, but we had so many partners this year. And when we all had to leave campus and start working remotely in March, so many people kicked it into overdrive to make sure that we were doing all the outreach we could to parents and students, continuing students, to make sure that they could find their way back to our campus. So the team effort with our faculty and our academic partners through campus programs, our advisors who worked so incredibly hard this summer, having to do often individual appointments with students constantly throughout the summer to make sure they were all properly set up for, for the fall start. Orientation Office for being innovative and introducing new programming that would help students be welcomed to our community. And all of the support offices that did a ton of work in July and August to make sure our students were ready when we started the semester in the fall. So thank you to everyone. We've already turned our, our sites to spring enrollment and fall 2021 and we look forward to partnering with all of you through all those initiatives.
Thank you. Thank you so much, John, for your presentation. The, this is truly, truly an extraordinary development. And the enormous work, the enormous care, the enormous dedication and sense of purpose that has gone into making this extraordinary reality that in the context of sustained broad declines throughout the country, UMass Boston can proudly say, we, our students, vote with our feet, continue to serve the communities that are most deserving of our greatest endeavors. I am so grateful for the work that went into making this a reality. I have to say that when I meet with fellow chancellors and indeed presidents from throughout the country, I have a little of Latinx guilt here because while everybody is reflecting upon declines and losses, we remain Boston, strong and proud. I am so, so grateful for all of the, the, the work, all of the dedication. It is indeed a remarkable, a remarkable achievement. I'll paraphrase Sartre and say, if we didn't have John and enrollment management, we would have to invent it. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Great, thank you. I have, I have put a lot of data into this section. I'm not going to endeavor to cover it all, but it will be in the presentation if, if people want to look at it later. Also, if, if like me, the last couple of days, you've been practicing, looking at charts and data and trying to understand it and trying to interpret it, I find that looking at our student success data is, is almost as interesting, if not more interesting than looking at election data. And so if, if you find this data interesting, I would also encourage you to go to our IR Institutional Research's website. If you just Google UMass Boston retention and graduation dashboards, there's some really fantastic data there that you can sift and sort through and learn more about this topic for our students. But if we flip ahead here, I'll just share a few of these slides with you. The next, the first chart here, so this, I think, is the highlight and is some just really interesting data. The purple line here that starts below and comes up above just shows you the size of our first-time, full-time freshman class each of the last 12 or 14 years. You can see the tremendous growth that's happened in the size of our first-year cohort each year. The blue line shows you the one-year retention rate of those same cohorts. And you can see on the far right-hand side, what is, what is great news, which is we had about a 1% increase in our retention rate this year with that first-year cohort that's now entered into their sophomore year. So I think this is really fantastic. The next slide will show it to you in a different way, which is broken down by residency. So by residency, I mean, are they in-state, are the students in-state, out-of-state or international? And the orange line here shows you what happened to our international population, which may come as no surprise, given the pandemic and given the various restrictions that have been put in place. We, our retention of first-year, one-year retention of international students declined by 13 points from 80 to 67%, while at the same time, our in-state students, the retention rate increased by two points from 76 to 78 and our out-of-state retention increased from 61 to 63%. The gray line here represents the vast majority of our students. And so I'm really proud to say, I'm really proud of all the work that's been done across the campus. So, so many people, almost everyone, if not everyone, contributes to student success and a two-point gain in our freshman retention rate is really incredible. So this, this is a really, really exciting slide. I wish I knew how to make it look, look more exciting, but I think so much hard work has gone into it. And then the, the three of these combined get you to the one-point increase from the prior slide. Of course, it's really important to keep disaggregating and looking at our different student groupings. On the next slide, and I'll go quickly through these. You can look at it by race, ethnicity. Really, really important to see where we have achievement gaps by race, ethnicity. And this is just, this is this year's data. And the next slide shows you the same information over time. So we can look at which, which of these student groupings have increased or decreased or above or below others and start to tailor solutions based on that. Again, I'll go quickly and you can look at, you can look at the data later. The next slide just breaks it down in a different way. So this looks the same way by, by race and ethnicity, but then breaks down by gender identity. So for example, on the left-hand side, the blue, the two blue bars are for our Asian-American students. The lighter blue bar on the left-hand side is for our female students and on the right-hand side is for our male students. As you track across the page, you can see in each of these categories that our male identifying students perform or have returned to the university at a lower rate, significantly lower rate than our female identifying students. I'm not going to get into today why or, you know, what, what we're trying to do about it, but I think it's really, really important just to see the data and to break it down into these different, into these different groups. If we go, keep moving forward, just briefly, we often focus on the first-year students. I think it's really important to look at our transfer population as well. This slide just shows you again, the one-year retention rate for our new transfer students. The darker line here that's up above shows for full-time transfer students and the line below shows for part-time transfer students. Did they return for, for a second year or they enrolled in this semester? Really interesting to see not only the increase for our full-time transfer students, but a really significant increase from 58 to 69% for our part-time transfer students. So again, it's, I think it's perhaps a little bit hard to disentangle what, how much of this is the great work that we've done and how much of this is some sort of pandemic effect. But I think either way, it's, it's positive news that our students are staying with us and, and that we're seeing increases in these numbers. And Lauren, maybe you just can quickly move forward. Some of the same breakdowns are in here. And you can also see over time and by college, what some of the rates are. And that's it, I'll leave it at there. Take a look later, go look for the UMass Boston Retention and Graduation Dashboard, where there's a lot of fantastic data like this. And let's all celebrate these increases in our one-year retention rates this year. IR, you'll probably be hearing soon, once the data becomes official, but I believe it's not premature to say that our sixth-year graduation rate is also seeing an increase this year in the preliminary numbers. So we have a couple of great retention stats to be really excited about for our students. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Garrett. In the context of so much uncertainty and so much bad news, this is really a time to celebrate and to really reflect upon the improvements and really reflect upon the extraordinary work of all our communities to keep connected, bonded, to keep serving our students. And the data indeed tell a very, very good story. Thank you. I'm very, very grateful for that work.
And last but not least, there are a few updates on some of the university's major projects. So the first project I'll just touch upon is the Substructure Demolition and Quadrangle Development Project. This project has continued while the campus has been operating remotely. If you were to come to campus today, it looks much different than how it looked when classes went remote in March. The substructure work in Wheatley McCormick was largely completed over the summer. So everyone who has offices and labs and classrooms in those two buildings has just avoided a whole lot of disruption with that work that would have been going on had we been on campus. The pool building has been demolished and we've now begun the demolition of the Science Center. There's some bi-weekly communication meetings that are being held on the project where folks from different areas of the university are meeting. So you can get some information from the representative, from your area, on the committee about the project. There's also further information on the university's website at the link here. We also have a webcam up on the Clark Athletic Building where you can watch the progress of the SDQD project. So I encourage you to take a look at that if you're a little interested in what it might look like. It shows some of the work being done. I've got a couple of pictures here just so you can see briefly. If you want to take a look at the plaza, is it come out of the Quinn Building? It's completely gone and we're going to be building a brand, brand-new walkway and surface so that it will be ADA compliant and will be brand-new for people to walk. Gone are the days of those broken pavers and where you had to just constantly look down to make sure you didn't trip. Next, we just have, if you look here, this is a look at where the, the pool building had been. You know, we're looking, moving full speed ahead with demolition. And lastly, some of the work on the Science Center, if you were to come over to campus, if you go to the next slide, is starting to begin to take, take this down. This is, um, selective demolition is coming down piece by piece. There's no big kaboom that's going to happen on, on a particular day. This is being taken down piece by piece. So that work is underway. You know, Gilbane is the construction company working on that. This is a secure construction site that's, you know, real, just full speed ahead on getting this project done. Next, I'll talk a little bit about Dorchester Bay City, commonly known as Bayside on our campus. If we go to the next slide, this project is a monetary transaction for the campus. Back in 2019, the UMass Board of Trustees approved a lease agreement with Accordia Partners that would involve a minimum payment of 192.5 million up to a maximum of 235 million to the university that would be due at the time of permitting, depending on how much square footage is actually approved during, in the permitting process. This project is subject to the City of Boston Article 80 permitting process. Normally, as a university, we would be exempt from this process. This project, because it's not a university purpose, is going through the permitting process and that's well underway. Back when this project first kicked off, you might remember before COVID, there were some charrettes that were held and we also had a campus forum last fall. All that information was used as Accordia prepared to file its project notification form. Moving forward to the next slide, they have filed that on this past September. That kicks off the real formal public planning process at the Boston Planning and Development Agency's request. Accordia included both the Bayside parcel and a separate parcel that's across the street at Mount Vernon, across Mount Vernon Street where the Santander Bank is. Accordia owns that property as well. So BPDA asked them to master plan both parcels. So they have done that and released a plan that is for a total of 5.9 million square feet on both those parcels. The public process has begun. There is a Citizens Advisory Committee that's been formed. Assistant Vice Chancellor Matt Fenland is the university's representative on this committee. We are going to have a public meeting for the UMass Boston community specifically on November 19th, 2020. So stay tuned, there'll be information out about the Zoom link and how you can participate in, in that session that will be forthcoming in the next few days. There also are the regular public meetings. There's been six that have been scheduled. Some of them have already taken place. There's others that are still going to be held between now and December 2nd. The schedule is on the BPDA website. We've also released it to the campus community. So you can take, you're welcome to participate in that. That's for all members of the community to participate. There's a public comment period, like there is for all projects under Article 80. That's been extended through December 11th. So campus community also is welcome to provide comments during the public comment period. After this work, after these sessions are held, then Accordia will take all that information that they've obtained and they will go back and work to build that input into updated plans for the project. That'll be going on over the next few months. Then they will host a second series of public meetings. We expect that that process will take place and be completed in approximately one year's time. And then the goal at this point would be to move forward to obtain permits by June 30th, 2022. If we take a look at what the project is, been proposed, it's mixed use, academic and life science space, residential, retail, commercial uses. They're talking about this in the public meetings, so feel free to take a look at it. There's also a link here on baysideupdate.com where you can see what's being proposed. There's a $25 million infrastructure contribution that's also part of this deal that's separate and distinct from any funding that would come to our campus. This is to help with infrastructure that's going to be needed as a result of this project. So Accordia is working with the city. So Accordia is working with the city and other stakeholders around that. And they've also indicated that they may plan to use some of this for improvements on Mount Vernon Street. As I stated, this is a cash transaction for the university. We can elect to purchase space and market weight if desired. You know, once we see what's, what's going to be built there, we can see what that might look like. If it's something the university would be interested in. We do retain use of the Bayside site until the permitting is approved for campus parking as we might need it. So while Bayside is closed right now because we've been operating remote, if we were to come back to full occupancy between now and June 2022, that site is available for our parking. And we also do have parking that's included in the SDQD project that will allow us to meet the long-term needs of the campus. Between that and the West Garage that's been built, one space I comes offline for development. We do expect that the, we will hold a brown bag construction session probably beginning of next semester so we can go through all the campuses' construction projects, including SDQD and look at the parking lot and those kinds of things at that time. And then last but not least, once this project is permitted, the project proceeds come to the university for use on qualified capital investments that we'll be looking at as part of the campus's planning process that will be ongoing soon. We also have another project going on with the CAFPASTURE pump station. This is a little bit different than Bayside. This is not strictly a cash transaction. Instead, UMass Building Authority is in the process right now of exploring the use of a public-private partnership to finance and design, construct, and manage a project that would not only restore the CAFPASTURE pump station building, but then also develop the land around it. So it is anticipated the campus would have a footprint in this project. There had been an RFI process that was conducted last winter to engage developers in what, what this project could look like. So Oumba got some initial information there. Then now, now we're at the process where there's an RFP that's been issued for experience advisor for the project. So this advisor would work on developing the strategy associated with conducting a process for this project using a P3. So this would be someone who would be hired similar to what Newmark did with the Bayside project. So it's an advisor that will be available to help the campus and Oumba with this project. The responses to this RFP are due November 23rd. So once that advisor is selected, then there can be more information about what steps would be taking place regarding our RFP for development or any next steps. So that's a little bit about the CAFPASTURE pump station and I'll stay tuned for that as well. So I think that's an update on these three major projects. So I will just turn it back over to our chancellor for some final concluding remarks.
Thank you so much, Kathleen, for that, for that thorough presentation. I guess the university is in the eternal dialectic of construction and deconstruction. When I was in graduate school at Berkeley, Foucault was teaching and Levi Strauss was teaching at Berkeley and Pierre Bardieu would, would come, was teaching and Jacques Deditat, the great Algerian scholar, would drop by. And deconstruction had another meaning in that context. But I guess it does make the point that we are in this eternal dynamic of constructing, deconstructing, and moving, and moving ahead. So thank you. Thank you for that wonderful presentation. Please do become engaged with the, we've requested a special gathering, a special convening for our UMass Boston communities from the Accordia partners. And I hope that you will all become engaged and that you will give the kind of constructive feedback that will make our, our new neighbors and create significant opportunities for our campus communities and for our community more, more broadly. I want to finish this on time. I want to thank everyone for joining us today. I hope this was useful. I hope this was helpful. I want to once again say how grateful I am to the leadership team, to our colleagues in media services for their extraordinary work in preparing this event and really in everything they do. I tell the, the president, whenever I see him, that I'm the happiest chancellor in the University of Massachusetts system. And it is true, and it is true because of all of you. All of your endeavors, your ethic of care, your commitment, your engagement with purposeful work in these very, very troubling times. I want to urge you to send any additional questions, any additional comments to the email chancellor@umb.edu. Thank you. Please stay safe. Please stay strong. This too shall pass. We need to come together. We are all this together. The community will come out stronger if we can come together. Thank you so much. Muchas muchas gracias. Be safe.